Let us pray. While we come this evening asking for your blessing and favor on our meeting of our mayor and city commissioner, we thank you for our great city and the success and prosperity we enjoy. We ask your wisdom and guidance on this board as we strive to make the right decisions for our city and its people. We ask your blessing on our city manager, our department heads, and the citizens we serve. Bless those that attend us this evening and be with us throughout this day. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The motion received and filed, intended.
Second.
Any discussion on it? All paper.
Aye.
No votes like sign. Received files of minutes for a regular meeting September 13, 2018.
September.
All paper.
Aye.
Hearing your reports.
Just want to welcome everybody this evening. We were like Gilligan's Island this afternoon. We took a three-hour tour of our 29th Street project and Mill Street project, getting all the updates and tying all the laces together. It was an exciting time. We finally got 29th Street out. We're working out the bugs on some issues. Mill Street will be ready probably by the end of November. We welcome Patty Bennett as our new publisher of our newspaper next door. We just now got done with Bennett over there. And I want to invite everybody out to Puck and Stadium tomorrow. Our Tomcats versus Boyd County is homecoming night. And our Tomcats, Ryan, your former Tomcat, Ryan Conlon, will rank number one in the state. So I invite you out tomorrow night to the game. That's all I have, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Second house divided at our house. Why not really? We're Boyd County graduates, but our kids are excellent people. So we have to go back and forth between the two. Just want to say welcome to everyone who's here. It's great to see such a great crowd. I don't really have any other comments other than to sort of echo Commissioner Goode's comments about Mill Street and 29th Street. When we set forth that endeavor to repair that building and get a place where our workers would be safe, I think our vision was what it's coming to. It's been too long in the making and none of us are happy about that. But I think we're getting to a place where we can be proud of where we have been working. So thank you to everybody who's worked.
Anyone else? I just want to mention, if anybody had anything to do with Hope Land, I appreciate it. It's become a monumental signature event for us. It's going to get bigger. And I'm looking forward to the Riverfront event. Can y'all hear me?
It's difficult.
Well, that's odd. Because when I get home in the evening, I've never, nothing against my antenna TV. I'm proud we have them and they do a great job because everybody tells me so. I've yet to watch a meeting when I get home. But my wife always says to me, when my daughters call, she'll say, Dad, I heard you say, for God's sake, you can't do that. That's what that's the worst thing. When I'm reaching out to him a little bit to say, I'm okay, but I apologize when I do those things. It's not meant to be critical of anything, which is just the way it is. But the chairperson and all the volunteers it takes to put an event like that, and it was people from everywhere and long distance. So it's another one of those banner events we have in Ashland, Kentucky that makes us special. So I want to be on the record that the city deeply appreciates all that, that everyone that got involved in that. Okay, city manager?
Mayor, just wanted to echo to the committee that set up Hope Land and also to the city staff that worked really diligently. We're trying to get into a normal rhythm on how we set those events up to make sure the security of the city and the citizens that are attending those events. I really appreciate everything the staff did to ensure that that happened. And my other comments will be as part of the agenda, ma'am.
Okay, right. At this point in our meeting, it's public participation. And if you have an issue that you'd bring before the commission, we'd ask you to give us your name and address and try to limit your comments to five minutes or less.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Holly Canfield. I live at 240 Etna Street in Russell. But I am here this evening to represent your advisory board at your local Salvation Army. I'm asking for support from the city in reference to our third annual Bells of Hope 5K. This race has been held every year at our local Salvation Army, with the course starting on 23rd behind the Salvation Army, turning right onto Bath Avenue, around Central Park two times, and then back to our actual Salvation Army office. Coming back to the Salvation Army allows us to welcome the community into our facility, see really what the Salvation Army does, provide a little bit of education, and ask for support for them to be able to be a part of some of the great work that we do at the Salvation Army. So I believe that past two years, we've had one, maybe two, police vehicles that have assisted us in blocking the intersection of 22nd Street and perhaps the intersection at the park or the entrance. This is our largest fundraiser for the Salvation Army next to our Kettles. And proceeds from the race go directly to our homeless shelter to serve our needy in the community. Last year, we raised a little over 14,000. And I would also want to add that this race recognizes local veterans in our community and really honoring those who have served. We do contract with Alan Osuch from Tri-State Racer to help coordinate the race. Alan has indicated to us that the city has imposed a fee of $1,477 to put in place for if we were to use city streets as a part of this race. This fee would put a dent in the race funds that we are able to get back from this because it is such a small fundraiser. We understand that there are alternative free routes, but we feel strongly that we are welcoming the community back into our Salvation Army to be able to provide some education about what we do. It's really a fundamental piece of education. This is a short course in relation to some others in our community. And in relation to what city roads would actually be used, I think it's maybe three blocks. This course is the course that the United Way used in their last race, and the city did in fact waive that fee for them. So with that being said, I respectfully ask the city do the same for us. Anything else to add?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any comments?
I've just got comments. They've welcomed Holly. It's the new pair of arms. Thank you.
And she's our new chairperson.
I'm not saying.
Both jobs.
Anyone else like to appear reports?
Well, I can't follow the Salvation Army very well, but my name is Bob Zimmerman. I live at 1415 Bath.
Don't look forgot, Bob.
Yeah.
I get that. Okay.
Okay. In any event, I'm here to represent the folks at the condominiums there. We have 21 units, and I've lived there for 20 years. Unfortunately, the building next to us, the old ACC building, has gotten into terrible condition. We're very concerned about it. It was posted by the city as unsafe, et cetera, more than, well, December of 2016. And it has certainly not improved since then. We understand that a new owner, Alyssa Rigsby, has been trying to get some assistance from the city to tear down the building, which would make a much more valuable piece of property, potentially for sale. And I assume the city would give back any money that they advanced her to do that. Ms. Rigsby had had other plans, but that didn't work out. The property is unsafe. The windows are broken. We are very concerned about homeless and so on getting into the building. I know the code enforcement people had blocked a number of the doors and exits, but we still think people are getting in. Last week, someone commented they were out in the parking lot at 2:30 a.m. We have five people currently that are in their 90s, and some of them require caregivers. So one of the caregivers was taking a break and apparently saw activity in the building. We've got animals moving in and out of all the broken windows. If you go by the property, especially on the side at Central, it's hard to see. But there are trees growing up against the building, and it's relatively easy for the possums and the raccoons, and unfortunately, the homeless perhaps getting in. There are also some other places where our manager has found the windows open when they've been secured. The property has deteriorated. There are over 40 windows facing our property, and at least one of them has fallen out and knocked a hole in our carports. And if we had a hurricane or something like that, given the condition, I'm not sure what things would be like. But as taxpayers, and I think, as I said, they're individually owned condos, so we'd probably pay $5,000 or $6,000 a year to the city government irrespective of county and other things. And we'd appreciate your consideration. We thought that the property was included in the tax abatement district that was formed to assist the hotel. And we think that's a great idea. I really liked the hotel under previous ownership, when you could go up there for dinner after church on Sundays. But the map that the newspaper published showed, we thought that that district included the old ACC property. But it seems that some of the folks have said, no, it doesn't. So again, if you can do anything to assist the safe sanitary demolition of the building, we realize it will be disturbing for us. We've already been told by people who are in the, looking at it, to offer bids, that it would require being on our property and perhaps moving our canopies and doing other things. But we would appreciate the commission's consideration. And thank you very much.
Thanks, Bob. That's probably the oldest condominium unit in Ashland. That's the first one I remember being built. It doesn't look that way, but it's certainly, it's still a beautiful building. And I know all those who like to go on campus, you know, we're not every man, you know. The city just doesn't have funds, budget to tear private property down to begin with. That's an issue. Would we like to see it come down? You bet. If it could be saved the way it was, you know, which I spent about 20 years in our Board of Education, and I couldn't imagine saving that building. Chris, could you, I know we posed a question about our TIF, so I want to get on.
Just for the sake of clarity, it is in the TIF district now.
So it is in the, that's on.
Yeah, those funds, part of the TIF plan, the agreement that we had with Boyd County Fiscal Court, is that the incremental increase in revenue be directed towards the hotel project, was this with that development. But for that development, the other development does, the other developments do not occur. You're absolutely right. It is, it's a beautiful building conceptually, but we've had a few developers look at it. This is our third in probably five years. And when they start looking at the feasibility of redeveloping it into something that could actually cash flow, it just doesn't work. And we would love to find someone who could make it work. But with Ms. Rigsby taking over ownership as recently as I believe a couple of weeks ago, we look forward to sitting down with her and talking through her plan on how she intends to move forward. We've had some preliminary discussions already. I believe she has, I can confirm, I know she has talked to some demolition companies locally about moving forward. So we'll continue to work with her. Again, she just took over sole ownership of the property. And we do think it's a great piece of property for redevelopment, if renovation is out of the question, unfortunately, it probably is.
Yeah, I would think so. We're all kind of tuned into that area. I want you to understand, and those of you who come to a lot of our commission meetings, we hold our neighborhood sacrosanct. And downtown is just, is right atop the list. And we seem to do pockets all over town to try to eradicate. As you see, we're starting to tear old houses down and basically to help those neighborhoods. And then hopefully somebody can either, if it's large enough, lock, they can do something with it to put a nice, nice place on it or whatever. We're all committed to that. And when it's a larger situation like that, which will affect Bob, a lot more people, you know, it's just like a big neighborhood in that building. And that building still, still is great. That's credit to the caretakers of that building, I can tell you. But no one, we say it all the time, we get pictures from the neighborhood, and we haven't been out there yet. And our first reaction is, I don't want to live next door to that. So I don't want any of my neighbors or my citizens to live next door to it. You know, something has to be done. It isn't as easy as us being committed to it, but it is an avenue, once we're on board, that we exhaust every way possible. And it's private ownership, and there's a way we can assist through our government programs to revitalize that piece of property that would enhance not only the condos that are there, but the rest of the downtown area.
And Mayor, the ray of hope there is that you look at that corridor along Central Avenue between Central and Carter from 13 to 18. I would say that, besides the mall district, that's probably where we've seen the most growth over the last 10 years. There's a lot of new office buildings that are being constructed in that area. And there's, I see no reason why that piece of property wouldn't be the next to turn.
Sure. Well, you know, Mr. Zimmerman, if you, I don't know, you've kind of the spokesman. Do y'all have a mayor of that building?
I'm the president of the association.
All right. So get his personal information, number where he can stay in touch with. Bob's a longtime library employee, outstanding citizen, and he's a heck of a nice guy to know. But I appreciate your presentation. We're all concerned about the look of that building, trust me. You know, we exchanged hands a couple of times, and I think there were some pretty good aspirations for what that could look like. And then they get in there, and I think one of the major cogs is to, is tearing it down. It's full of asbestos, and that's a, has another level of expense and all. But be aware and put a newsletter out in the building. We're very concerned about what you're being dealt there with that building. And we will stay on it. And we'll try to keep you informed so you can keep your resident of that building informed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. I appreciate it. I've had a few calls from some of your residents, and when I get them, I just get ahold of Mr. Puller so I can get information on it. So you're here pretty quick. I appreciate that. What is the name of the unit now, condo unit?
It's called Park Terrace.
Has it always been called that?
I believe so.
That's, okay.
At least after the building was up and running.
Yeah.
They had a number of some kind when it first started, 1415, something like that. It's been Park Terrace for probably 40 years.
Well, it's been a great addition out of that. So we'll stay in touch with you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else like to appear reports?
Mayor, Mr. Sherman, Mayor Ben Carter. I'm the president of the Public�owers South Street. I'm a resident of Ashland, but I reside here from 7:30 to 4:00 p.m. every day. Very important, I think. Greatful to have opportunity to come and speak, and thank you guys for having an open mic. I want to speak to Adam A. of our new business, where it's asking for an extension and monetary value and consideration before the commission tonight on the wastewater project. And I've been in construction 20-plus years. I'm the president of our organization. I'm the training coordinator, take care of apprentices with HVAC plumbing, all that stuff on a daily basis. We train in construction. I know in construction management that the value here, when you're asking for change orders, that's the way a contractor has an upper hand in getting a bid, bidding low, applying change orders, and getting those change orders approved in increments. And you always have a contingency, I understand that, to allow for those things to happen. But I do pastor a church where I live in Lewis County. And I know that if we're faithful, little things will be rewarded so much. And I just ask the commission and all the city officials to please pay particular attention to the details and these kind of things. And it's not really the money here that's the issue, that I see is the time. And I've taken project management courses in construction, and the major issue you have on a project when you have conditions in the agreement or the contract with your time is you're going to be paying a penalty if you don't take your time. And I would consider, ask to consider looking at the time in each one of these change orders, that it's sufficient, that you don't give more time, that it should be allotted for the changes taking place, to make sure the city stays on track with the commitments that's made in the contract.
I appreciate that, Ben. I know anybody that's served here's learned the hard way on that, when they get a low ball of bid and then a change order and a change order. We're all tuned into that and had a series of meetings with the contractor that came before this ever started. We have a new thing that hit us this year called expanded jurisdiction by the state. And I think the manager says 18 cities. It hit us hard on making changes in that building that we didn't think we, you're aware of it, I hope.
Correct.
So that, it really ran us a couple, three months, five months late on actual, this being done. It's now, we're scheduled to be done by the end of November. Actually, these change orders are a decrease in payments, so it's not, it's not an additional, it's things the state said, no, you can't do it like this, is what you got to do. So that's what ran us. We're not over budget on this project.
Right.
We're over time on the project.
And that's always, in construction management, the program I'm taking in classes, they always say, time is money. And the biggest thing you have to do in construction management is time more than even so the money or the budget.
And for this, it's been a major inconvenience for our utility people, water and sewer people, that we're in the worst shack in Ashland, you know.
Can't wait to get to the new building.
Yeah, they can't wait.
And we wish the best for the cities.
Yeah, and that's going to be a good little area. You can take your people to that.
Yeah.
Okay. I appreciate you being, it's your own party.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Gilmore?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Burton? Some of y'all know me. I wish my business was as pleasant as some of the other businesses going on today. I've got a question first time. An elected official.
Name and address.
My name's Anthony Gibson. I live at 5182 Valley Drive. An elected official of this city, is it safe to say that he represents the city pretty much at all times?
I hope so.
Thank you. One more question, and this is for all of you. Is it pretty safe to say that a citizen of this city has the right to choose their political preference without harassment? Would that be, would that be a safe assumption?
Well, sure, I think everybody is perfectly agree with you. It would be as safe, it should be, assumption.
A right. Everybody? We all agree with this? We have an elected official in this town who's having a problem with his election this Not only is he having a problem with his election this year, but he likes to go to people's employment and air his problems. He went to my wife's employer, not just one location, but two, while she was on vacation. She gets back to work, and everybody's haming her, asking her questions, what's going on? The insinuation was made as far as my wife's ability to do her job correctly because he was running for political office for reelection. Now, my question, and this can be settled tonight, but my question is, if he's got a problem with a sign that I put out, not my wife, he needs to be man enough to step up to a man and stop harassing a woman at her place of employment, especially insinuating her abilities to do her job. He knows who I'm talking about.
Well, I appreciate the problem you've had, and I'm sorry about that. I think you've made your point. There's not a whole lot anybody else can do about it. And everything you've asked us is a positive guess. Of course, you can put any sign you want. You know, this is, I don't know what, I'm sure there's something shouldn't, but I'm not certain political ass. You certainly can do that, but it appears to me there's a personal situation that we don't deal with that here.
They have made it very personal.
Yeah.
When they pick on my family and harass my family, if it's the last breath I draw, I will defend my family.
Well, I understand what you're saying, and I think we all would.
And I have no politician going to my wife's employment and insinuating her ability to do her job, not just one location, but two, after they was told she was on vacation. Now, I've got a problem with that. Like I said, this can all be settled tonight. I want a public apology to what this individual's done. If not, let the chips fall how they fall.
Well, I doubt we're going to get a public apology from anybody in a public meeting like this, but counsel.
The political activities of any individual member of the commission are just that, his own political activities. There aren't official actions in the city. The city doesn't have any position.
Thank you very much. So then, then my issue would be with this certain individual, correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
You're going to remain silent about this, aren't you?
Mr. Gibson, I really think you need to handle this in another manner, in another way.
Oh, trust me, I sure can.
Whether in a public meeting, I'm sorry with the situation, I won't leave, explain it, but we, that in the business we do here, that's more of a personal nature than public thing.
Well, it really, yeah, it is. I mean, when you take an elected official, goes into a private business, that's a form of harassment. That is defamation of character.
Issues related to campaigning are not issues, official issues of this commission.
No, 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 no. This issue refers to her ability to do her job.
I understand, but if I hear what you're saying.
And then, then the comment come out that worried about her political preference.
I understand, but what I'm saying to you is, any individual, whoever they are, whether they are an elected official or just running for that elected office, their campaign is their own individual actions. It's not actions in the city. And this body can't take any action with respect to that, and there's no remedy here for that. I understand you have a complaint, but again, it is, it's a political activity, and whatever your remedies might be, are not with the commission. The commission can't take any action on that.
Fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Thank you, Mr. Burton.
Anyone else like to be heard?
Good evening. My name is Richard May, 2809 Hanson Street. I just have a question about the recycle center. Is there a residency requirement to utilize the recycle center?
Yes, there is.
Would that just be Boyd County residents only or Ashland residents? Ashland. Well.
There currently is not a residency requirement on the, you're talking the recycling drop-off point?
Yeah.
Perfect. There's not, currently, there's not a residency.
Well, why wouldn't there be?
Well, I thought there was.
I thought there was, too.
I stand corrected by city manager on it, but I thought we could terminate that a while, while back. There we come from Ohio and West Virginia.
The reason, that's the reason why I'm asking, Mr. Gilmore, is I sat down there three weeks ago. I had two cars from Ohio in front of me and a car from West Virginia behind me, and two cars from Ohio behind that car. behind me, and two cars from Ohio behind that car. Now, my problem with that is, I'm paying taxes for somebody in another state to dump in my town.
Exactly.
I'm getting tired of paying taxes for them to get free service. Now, why can't the city take action on that?
I know we don't typically take action during public participation, but can we please say that that recycling center is for city of Ashland residents?
Because if you did, if you did a landfill and dump out there, they're not shy about asking you if you're a boy county resident, and they have, you have to use the license to prove it.
Well, it's not, it's not so much we're proud or a little out of, we're all boy counties, okay?
Understand.
But they have a landfill, and they, they don't utilize recycling, or they do, I'm sorry, they have.
I understand, they've got a lineup of dumpsters out there at the entrance that you can dump glass.
Right, yeah, that's true.
Which Ohio will do. And the second issue, that, right there, just please look at that to see if something could be done about that.
Yeah, we'd make that motion.
During the study, that's what we studied, was they took a census, a consensus of vehicles coming through that gate and where they were from.
Well.
And that went into the study, and we, we do have a lot of out-of-state people coming. And we, we got rid of the dumping, there's no dumping down.
I understand that, but here's another problem with that, the dumping, according to Runkie's rule, you can opt dump trash bags in there.
Right.
Well, people get up there and they dump the trash out of the bag, and then they take the bag and throw it in the dumpster. That's the same issue, same difference, if they're gonna do that. And I had sat there and watched people unload their cars with the city employee that's manning the gate, just looking at them and never said a word to them. Dump the full bags of trash in there, you don't know what's in that trash bag. It could be the household garbage, for all I know, and it probably is in some cases.
It has been.
It needs to be placed just a little bit better. And as far as being a resident, the guy asks you every time you come in, he's, have you dumped here before? Yes. Where are you from? Ashland. Okay, pick number fifteen. I go up there to number fifteen and it's overflowing. They're not walking around and checking to see which ones, and not spreading them out like they should, and that's much of my personal opinion.
Well, I have an idea that we walk around tomorrow.
Well, I would appreciate that, I mean, you keep the job.
And if we limit it to Ashland people, you won't have the overflow, I don't believe, because there's six bins out of Runkie, out of the big run out here, that take glass.
Okay.
There's also three in Russell, behind Russell Fire Department. But there's everything thrown in there, so.
What, what's my big issue is this fact that I'm a taxpaying citizen of property owner, and I'm paying for people other than residents to, you know, they're getting free service from the city of Ashland, be my taxes.
We, we charge our citizens way more than we actually spend on sanitation, overcharge, in my opinion. And one way you could remedy that, of course, is curbside recycling.
Mr. Perkins, I agree with you, but it's unfortunate that the city did not come to some kind of scale that this.
We've never actually formally taken a vote on it, we're getting ready to build recycling right here, Commissioner Clark's getting ready to present it.
I feel I have my papers and.
It isn't simple in saying we're on charge, that, that there is a built-in, we can look at the budget time, we end that, but there are, every department of the city that is related to sanitation, pickup and all that, are involved in whatever people are paying for that. It isn't like we're storing money somewhere on the garbage pickup, I don't want people leaving, and I think that's the case.
No, it's important to note that that money goes to the general fund that pays other services.
Right, but I think, I think the citizens are assuming that the payment they're making for their sanitation is covering their sanitation. It makes common, it's logical to anybody looking at it.
It does cover their sanitation, but it's a service that's running from the city.
But it's, but it's also covering way more than sanitation, and people are asking for better sanitation services.
I appreciate that you all can make some kind of progress for that limited, that has later, that, that's one of the.
We're gonna make that motion right now, make it.
I appreciate you coming tonight.
If the original, at first meeting, if the original, the original was an ordinance.
There was a previous resolution by the board.
Not an ordinance, but a resolution.
A resolution that has not been resolved at this point, after the study was completed.
Well, resolution be appropriate, if it's an ordinance, that's gonna say you're gonna have to amend it by, by.
No, we just have a resolution, but I, but I would like to make the motion that our resolution include that the recycling center under the bridges is for city of Ashland residents who are already paying for trash.
And make sure that they show, all they have to show is their water bill.
They're already paying for the service.
They have a paid water bill to come through there and shows their.
Or garbage, if the city can show them if you're letting the city.
I second that. The ones in the county are just county records.
Thank you, thank you.
There was a motion, was there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
I oppose, like sign.
Mayor, I got one while we're on the garbage.
All right, name and, name and address, I know you.
I'm Chris, I live thirty twelve, we're on the main route. I own Smith Brothers Plumbing at three thirty-three twenty-third street, right next door to the Winchester Inn. I've been down here too twice, talked to the coat man. I go down and I got two inch wash right beside that toward alley, right by that damn hole that's due to my language. Shouldn't, I wouldn't say joke that. But the people leaving there, I don't know, I was in that motel. They must not have a washing machine or a dryer. They go up there, Johnson's dirty, I call it, they get them a buggy full of clothes, they come down there in the alley, they go in the motel, take these dirty ones off, either put them in the buggy or throw them on my lot. And it's slay went beer cans and other things. And I told the coat man, I said, I, listen, I'm on that, we've been in business eighty-eight years up there. And he said, well, we'll tell the police department, they're gonna run, maybe get them for litter. You don't do a bit good, I mean, I know they got the job to do, but it's, it's people standing in that motel, and I had to pick up the garbage, where I never cut grass, cans, bottles of beer, cans, bottles and everything else. And I told him, I said, I'm tired of it, he said, well, let's send the police up there, I'm at that place, I said, Mr. Gilmore, I'm, I'm gonna throw it out twenty-third and you can pick it up. I mean, I had, I, it is, I've, I've been there.
I understand, Bob, you should have to touch.
I mean, I've been there for years. I own the building, I own the property, but it, it's a shame the way they do at that motel.
Mr. Pullum, can we, can we do something with the honors, everybody to meet with you?
That's another thing too, I own a sixty or forty building there in the alley. They rent that motel and they go in and get that building, and I can't, I've got a sliding door as big as that wall, I can't even get the door open to get the men out to work. And I mean, it hits me hard, and if you go up there, that motel, wake them up, they just, they'll, the alley's a national, they say, you go and get some guy out of bed, work all night, he just raises can at you, you know, you know good this, know good that, get me out of bed. I can't even get the men out to go to work, 'cause I can't get the damn door open.
I got you, Bob. Well, thank you, I appreciate you coming and sharing that with us. Anyone else like to appear before us tonight? One more. I said, give her a, oh crap. We're glad you're here.
Hello, I'm Melissa Riggs, I'm the Hall School Building, and I did just get the deed for that this past Monday, and I have paid a ten percent deposit on the demo of the building, and I've been emailing back and forth with Chris and Lorraine about applying for grants, and I think there was some confusion about whether it was in the Tiff district or not, so hopefully now that it is, and my grant application is in, we can go forward with this in a positive way.
Ms. Riggs, we'll help you to extend the law allows us to help you to get rid of that.
We have my number, so any of you have any way at all to help me with this building, it's a pig in the po, when I ended up with it, I didn't really want it, but I have it, and I want it to go forward in a positive way for all of the community. And as an email states that I sent to Mr. Pullum, I think, two, three weeks ago, when I get my initial investment back out of it, the rest will be donated. I, I want to make no comment on this.
I think we can expect an enthusiastic commission to look at your application. I said, you know, we, we help private citizens with their businesses all the time, with the hotel, with the restaurants.
Exactly.
We're here to help everyone.
Thank you, Melissa.
You have the application, and thank you, thank you for your time.
And Chris, we need to get, get over where I can sit down and look at every option. Thank you.
Thank you.
There might be help for Park Terrace sooner than I thought, Bob.
Well, we'd appreciate it.
That's true. I've met with her several times, she, she's a, she's a go-getter, so I, I believe she'll make something happen. Anyone else? I appreciate y'all being here very much. Next item is old business, I don't know.
An ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing Stephen E. Gilmore Mayor to execute an agreement with St. Harper Northeast Kentucky Inc. to subray fifteen to five thousand dollars in the two thousand eighteen program of your community development block grant.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
I oppose, like sign. I'll be.
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, accepting proposal of GRW Engineers, Inc. to provide professional engineering services by preparing plans and specifications for supervisory control and data acquisition and instrumentation upgrades at the water treatment plant in the amount of two hundred eighteen thousand, six hundred forty dollars for the Department of Public Services and Utilities Operations.
Any discussion? Was this the moment where you'd asked at the previous meeting to have engineers explain here? So.
To give a, yeah, to give a little bit, the last BOC meeting, the mayor requested that the engineers from GRW come from up, we've got Monty Maynard with us and also Javon, and they work with you over the years, city government.
Yes, we appreciate you very much.
Yeah, and we appreciate the professionalism y'all have. If you could just give us a little, a little sketch, because we'd like to get you back and have a little work session with you, the commission and GRW, to go wherever detail is, this is a big deal, we're starting to embark upon the water, water lines and all that, so all of us want a more, you know, relaxed mood to try to process all that with you guys, okay?
Just real quick, sir, just as a reminder for the, the board and community, a needs assessment was approved by the board through a professional services contract in eight February, which set up the needs assessment that GRW did. A needs assessment focused on a lot of things related to the water plant, roof over the clarifier, a variety of other things, but after the needs assessment, they came to what GRW is about to bring here as the, as the greatest need at the water plant.
Yes, now, this is a study that we've, we've given you now a final copy of it, with the one you had before was draft. It seems to me that the instrumentation is, the most critical thing you have at the water plant right now is a problem, the, some of your filter control issues, that you've had some larger filter issues, I think that you can resolve a lot of that with the instrumentation by improving the way you control the filters. All of the equipment that you use to gather the data that you have is obsolete, the manufacturer is already discontinuing individual pieces of that, and within the next two years, the whole thing will be just unavailable for purchase. The computer, you had, you had three workstations originally to run the SCADA system, two of them completely gone, the third one, I understand, is having to be rebuilt out of old parts and still running Windows XP, which they haven't supported for some time, you probably got ten at home. So, yeah, it's, it's in a state of disrepair, and, you know, kudos to your operators for keeping it going as well as they have, there's a lot of manual labor involved. I think if you put a new SCADA system in, you'll see chemical savings, energy savings, labor savings, you'll have a lot better process control and information to manage. I think you'll be able to solve your filter problems a lot easier. We looked at three options, two of them involve replacing the equipment in the same control room you have now, which is very, very tight, it's almost like a closet. But the option that we've agreed to that is the best option involves taking a space across the hall from the old control room, which is not being used anymore, is, is a perfect size for a control room. And so we think we can build a system in that room, instead of trying to work around operators while trying to run a plant in the old room, and we can minimize the disruption and make it a lot easier transition, and hopefully we go a lot smoother that way. And there was only a premium of about a hundred grand to do the control room difference between that and the next alternative. So I think that's money well spent. And we have all, in our budget, we have, you know, money to put windows in that room and open it up to lobby like the old control room.
So this proposal will include the design, they'll assist in the bidding, construction administration for the plans and specifications for the constructed SCADA.
And that includes more, more than just SCADA, that fee, we're actually gonna design some chemical fee, you know, you're not, right now, you're not monitoring the weight of your chemicals, which is a requirement by the division of water. So I guess they're probably manually doing that as they load bags of chemicals, which is kind of tedious. But anyway, we, some of that stuff being replaced is included in there, to get you back fully operational.
Okay, well, we'll try to schedule a convenient time for y'all to come back again, maybe the lunch meeting or something, or morning meeting, where we get really up on every, every phase of this, this beginning point.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for coming. I don't have other comments on this specific, on that, it's just, just to clarify, so we, budget, how much for this initially?
In this year's budget, we had approximately nine hundred fifty thousand dollars total for items related to SCADA in the water plant.
So the, the request, obviously, for us is to adjust the budget by two hundred, the delta's about two hundred thirty thousand dollars, two hundred fifty thousand dollars, actually, we're gonna see, I think we can maintain, we can find that in the water district, excuse me, in the water plant budget. So we, so we will be able to pay for this, we believe we can, without making a budget adjustment, internally to that department's budget. Great.
I have comments, just cause I feel need comment. And I don't mean any disrespect to the speaker or anything, when I hear someone say to us, we've gotten in a state of disrepair, it upsets me. We were that way with Mill Street, a state of disrepair to the point that it's unsafe or it's whatever Mill Street a mess. And I just want to challenge this commission and this city manager and, and everybody in this place, that we don't let these things get into a state of disrepair. How, how do you get into that, that state, just to let that go and let that go and let that go to where we can't get parts, it's all discontinued? It should have been years ago that this was like that. So I'm just, I'm a soapbox, I'm sorry.
We're making, I'm thinking everybody agrees, we're, we're starting to make.
I know, we're trying to fix all of these things, but, but I, my goodness.
Did you have a chance, when you bought the system, it was.
He's trying to make you feel better.
Yes, I am. It was, Alan Bradley is the company that makes the equipment, and they, some, they sold millions of these things, and so they were forced to continue to make it, to sell parts.
Gotcha.
And they, they followed the Federal Trade Commission rules and made those parts for fifteen years.
So we're not really the only people in this, but.
No, there's a lot of people, you're on the tail end of the product when you bought, so that's kind of unfortunate situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm just throwing up that challenge.
I appreciate it. All favor?
Aye.
I oppose, like sign. See?
An ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing Stephen E. Gilmore Mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Ashland and Big Sandy Water District, extending the contract adopted by ordinance number seventy-seven, series two thousand thirteen, to furnish potable water for distribution sales within its water distribution system boundaries until year two thousand fifty-nine, and enabling the water district to receive USDA rural development funds.
Second. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
I oppose, like sign, I'll be.
Now, second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing Stephen E. Gilmore Mayor to submit the city of Ashland's Community Development Block Grant, two thousand seventeen Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All favor?
I recuse myself.
Oppose, like sign. Any other old business? Consent agenda?
Resolution, the city of Ashland, Kentucky adopting, authorizing, approving the course of action presented by the city manager on the items appearing on the consent agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of City Commissioners September twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen.
Salute. Any discussion, or any items? Item two, if you can clarify what specifically I'm looking at, and also for the public's consumption.
Item two is a revised notification of an application for funding to Kentucky Housing Corporation for Housing Tax Credits, Home Funds, and Construction Bridgeline for Rehabilitation Project Located Within the City Limits. Essentially, this is a third iteration of this that was approved previously by the board. The project known as Bruce Glow has added three. The project, known as Bruce Glow, has added three different units to that. Essentially, what we're doing with this is recognizing that this is a current in the city.
That's all.
Anything else? All paper?
Aye.
Close, like sign. And at this point, since we've made some promotions official, I'd like to, I have the honor to give the oath of office to three of our finest. I already see that my personal photographer can't take any pictures of him, gets him to go to get the note. I'm just kidding. Chris Brislin. Chris, and you have Luanne with you, and Aubrey, Laney, and Ansley. Good thing you get a promotion. And Georgia here. Where's, there she is, my old neighbor. Come on, Chris. David, you and George, come out, both of you.
Georgia grew up next door to me with my girls when I, my girl was the first born. My next door neighbor for many, many years. Wonderful family, good people, she's outstandingly. And my David almost as long as I've known you, George.
Chris, raise your right hand. Do you, Chris Brislin, do swear that you will well and truly discharge the duties of the office of Sergeant, the City of Asheville, Kentucky Police Department, according to the best of my skill, your skill and judgment, and that you will not knowingly or willingly commit any malfeasance of office, and will faithfully execute the duties of your office without favor, affection, or partiality, so help you God.
I do.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Well, when towns call their police departments their finest, we mean it. And we mean it for good reason. And we get the cream of the crop here. Very proud of it. Eric Taylor, who will be our new sergeant, one, Eric, and Erica, Drew, and Brady. Eric, please raise your right hand. Do you, Eric Taylor, swear that you will well and truly discharge the duties of the office of Lieutenant of the City of Asheville, Kentucky Police Department, according to the best of your skill and judgment, and that you will not knowingly or willingly commit any malfeasance of office, and will faithfully execute the duties of my office without favor, affection, or partiality, so help you God?
Will.
Congratulations. Okay. Lieutenant, Ryan Connolly, and Amy, and my Uncle Si and Aunt Midge, come up. Come up. Your family, this is your family. Oh, I don't have their name down.
That's okay, please.
You sure? Come on. Oh, you get up here. Oh, you're going to take this. So, I guess Ryan, some way, we're related. Maybe I should make you a commander over here or something. Thank you, guys, for being here and supporting. I appreciate it. I know they do, too. Is Ryan slowly making more of this than necessary? Let me say that, you know, all of our employees are valued, they truly are, and they all can be in peril from time to time, but our police officers could have gone on every morning. So, we know they're serious, and people will be serious with them. So, they're special people, and we appreciate the families, and why we like to have them up here, too, for allowing us to have them as police officers, and hope they get back home every night. And all these promotions happen, these don't happen very often, but since Major Hensley decided to retire and seek other vocation in law enforcement, and employment of police officers, it moved guys up, it gave opportunities for guys to move up. These guys are all really happy for you, Bill, because you retired. Things are going well for you. Raise your right hand. Do you, Ryan Connolly, swear that you will well and truly discharge the duties of the office of Mayor of the City of Asheville, Kentucky Police Department, according to the best of your skill and judgment, and that you will not knowingly or willingly commit any malfeasance of office, and will faithfully execute the duties of your office without favor, affection, or partiality, so help you God? Congratulations.
You only have three more hours.
Okay, any business, item A?
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance to the City of Asheville, Kentucky, authorizing and approving the change order in the form between the City of Asheville, Kentucky Tri-State Construction and Enterprise LLC, increasing the contract amount by $46,000, extending the completion date of the entire project to December 7, 2018, occupancy on November 30, 2018, and the contract for the City of Asheville's new water distribution and wastewater collection facility."
Salute. Any discussion?
Yes, just for the public's consumption, can we explain what the increase in price represents, thank you, Commissioner?
The change order reflects changes requested by the city, which were not originally budgeted in the contract. Also, items requested by, excuse me, required by an electrical inspector. Largest portion, and those two totals equate to $9,300. But the largest portion of this is the result, as we've spoken earlier about the loss of expanded jurisdiction. When the state gave them, they put some additional requirements on us, which in order to meet those standards, it's going to cost $36,600. Specifically, some of the safety requirements for railings, they did not originally forecast it.
Thank you, manager. All paper?
Aye.
Close, like sign. Item B.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance to the City of Asheville, Kentucky, authorizing and directing Stephen E. Gilmore, Mayor, to execute an agreement between the City of Asheville and Graves Western Union Properties LLC regarding parking and landscaping and encroachment at 1241 Carter Avenue on the city's right wing.
Second. Any discussion? All paper?
Aye.
Close, like sign. Item C.
First reading and approval, an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance to the City of Asheville, Kentucky, authorizing and directing Stephen E. Gilmore, Mayor, to execute contract between the City of Asheville, Kentucky, and Oddhill Trucking, Inc., for the purchase of gravel, stone, and sand for the Department of Public Services and Utilities Operations."
Salute. Any discussion? All paper?
Aye.
Close, like sign. Item D.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance to the City of Asheville, Kentucky, authorizing the submission of the analysis of competitiveness of fair housing as required by the Department of Housing and Urban Development in order for continued community development block grant and housing choice voucher funding for the City of Asheville Department of Community and Economic Development."
Have a motion? Any discussion? All paper?
Aye.
I recuse myself.
Close, like sign. Item F.
Would we do item D?
I don't know.
I believe so.
Okay. Let's do it then.
Don't like to break the mayor's buck.
Just go right into it.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance to the City of Asheville, Kentucky, adopting the housing choice voucher, HCB, program payment standards for the City of Asheville, Community and Economic Development Department, Division of Assisted Housing, Section 8."
Second. Any discussion? All paper?
Aye.
I recuse myself.
Item F.
Item F, F, first reading and approval, an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance to the City of Asheville, Kentucky, authorizing the reclassification of the Benefits Administrator, Assistant City Clerk, ABC Administrator, and adopting the revised job description for the position, authorizing the reclassification of the Risk Manager and adopting the revised job description for the position in the Department of General Government, Division of Human Resources, and adopting the authorized positions reflecting the changes of the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan and Classification Plan as adopted by ordinance number 51, series of 2017, as previously amended."
Salute.
Second.
Any discussion? All paper?
Aye.
Close, like sign. Item G.
First reading of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance to the City of Asheville, Kentucky, adopting an amendment to the Housing Choice Voucher Program, 2018, annual and administrative plan for the City of Asheville Department of Community and Economic Development, Division of Assisted Housing, Section 8, to provide a waiting list preference for families displaced by local, state, and/or national disasters."
Second.
Any discussion? All paper?
Aye.
Close, like sign.
I'll just recuse myself on that one.
Any other new business?
There are, I have something.
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion for us to discuss fireworks ordinance.
I'll second that.
You want to, how about?
We were given, were we given examples of that?
Yeah.
Yes, the board was given examples of it. I think the only thing that's up for discussion, probably worth discussing, would be the dates, the dates of it.
Dates of, when housing was.
Right, we had a couple of, look at the calendar real quick. Some of the windows that were brought up were last couple of days in June through the Fourth or the Fifth of July. I think the one that you had discussed was maybe a little bit more restricted, was just on the night of Fourth of July, also New Year's Eve, and Tomcat games also. So, I think.
Give a score.
Start point is. But the, Council Martin had put together a draft of that. I think the only thing that was, we received no other feedback except the dates, so whatever discussion y'all want to have.
Well, I'd like to, an ordinance be prepared for our next regular meeting, and let's, let's all determine.
Everybody needs to have some input in this, but it does need to be in place. We have a whole lot of our citizens who really, really don't like it, and we need to do something for them.
Well, the four days, fine with me. I mean, or less.
Can we make sure that this is on the next agenda so we can have it in our hands and read all the way through it before we vote on it?
Yeah. But it'd be nice in the discussion to know if there's any consensus as to what you want in at time.
Yeah.
I mean, we can put something in there arbitrarily, but it'd be better if we knew what you wanted.
Well, we never moved on, and we, you know, we brought it up, and we never moved on. We need to do this. We need to put something that works.
Well, I mean, you want the end of June through July 4th? You want New Year's Eve? You want?
I think New Year's Eve, the four days that you mentioned, and of course, the Tomcat games.
Yeah, so that would be, what if he goes with the end of June, and you may have five or six days. Let's just go with two, three. Why wouldn't we just keep it in July?
I think that's first four days of July.
Some motions sometimes starts at the end of June.
It depends on how fast, but you get a lot of fireworks that, you know, bleed up before.
Yeah, well, that's one of the problems, yeah. Like June 1st.
All the way to September.
They haven't left from last year, they use all those up, and then you go buy the new stuff. I'm all for some kind of a limit on that stuff. And how late? That's another factor, how late at night they do it.
Believe it was to 11:00 PM, Mr. Martin, on the original draft?
Yeah.
I think it limits.
I think we may have even had nine PM.
Okay.
But there's also a provision there that they can get special permission for fireworks on.
Correct.
That gave you a lot to.
Oh, yeah, a lot of, we'll present something.
Put something together. We'll probably change it.
The question that I asked when we brought this up originally is where does the enforcement lie? And I think that that needs to be somehow outlined in the, we don't have enough police officers for that. We just don't. And so, we've got to make sure that we are, we're passing an ordinance that if we're going to say we're going to do it, then we're going to do it.
You're essentially, you're going to be dependent on citizens to report somebody else, and if the police aren't on a higher priority, then they respond to that and implement the fine that they catch somebody actually doing.
Well, it's usually the case, 95% of arrests is followed by ordinances.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And those that are real aggravations in the neighborhoods, I'm confident will get called on. And I think people, for the most part, want something, something out there.
They do.
And I think courtesy is paramount.
I do, too. They don't think about other people.
So, Mayor, I hear the 30th of June through the Fourth of July, New Year's, and I believe, as Mr. Martin said, we originally had nine PM as a shut off or a turn off, so we'll have that prep, it's ready to go. We have draft version of it, we shared previously, so that's not a problem.
Are we going to say no? Our noise ordinance is ten, isn't it?
I think it'll be ten.
It ought to at least follow the noise ordinance, in my opinion.
Ten to five. Anything else? Thanks, Commissioner. Steve. Need a motion to go executive session to discuss two items, any litigation and individual personnel matter. No action will be taken in executive session. We may vote to come back down.
You mean you may report action when you return?
Yeah. A motion to go into executive session, please? Second? Okay.